With various departments out in the audience along with several citizens and guests that I see. Thank you for coming tonight. Our invocation and our pledge of allegiance tonight will be led by Mr. Mattany. If you're available.
Thank you, Mayor. I would invite anyone who would like to pray to join me at this time. Heavenly Father, we came into 2021 hoping that 2020 was in the rearview mirror. To say that there have been hiccups would be an understatement, but we still have that hope, especially as long as we hold to you. Lord, heal this nation, heal our hearts, help repair relationships between neighbors, families, and friends. We ask for your protection against this pandemic that has taken such a toll, not only on our planet, but here in our community. Thank you for wrapping your arms around those who fought the disease, those who were fighting the disease, and those who were welcomed into your presence after the battle ended. May this vaccine help eliminate the new normal and get us back to just normal. Lord, be with us tonight as we make decisions for this city, and may they be pleasing to you. These things I ask in your name. Amen. And for all who can and would like to please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Mattany. Just a note of information, tonight's meeting allows for the participation of our council members via Zoom or remotely, as approved on a special called Emergency Council Meeting of 12:30-20, to approve suspending our normal council and committee rules to allow for remote participation and voting. We are in that ordinance tonight, emergency ordinance. Proclaimations and presentations, they are none. Our city council meeting of December the 21st of 2020 has been in your packet since Thursday. Hopefully everyone's had a chance to read it. If there are any corrections, adjustments, or objections to those minutes, please voice those now, or we will vote by acclamation. Any objections to the minutes as submitted for December 21st of 2020? I don't see any, so the minutes are approved by acclamation. Special Call City Council Meeting in December 30th, 2020 also. If there are any objections, the corrections, the concerns, please voice them now since you've had them since Thursday to read. Not seeing any objections, so the Special Call City Council Meeting of December 30th minutes are approved by acclamation also. Thank you. Next order of business is public comment. We have two public comments. The first one is for anyone signed up to speak or via Zoom for any item that appears on the agenda tonight. The signing list shows no one for an agenda item tonight. Is there anyone on Zoom for an agenda item? Okay, so I've been told no one is raising their hand, so we will move on. And next will be our report from our city administrator, Mr. Madden.
Mayor, members of council, there are two items that I want to highlight under my report. The first is a report on our finances. We're halfway through the fiscal year, so we should be expecting to be at the 50% mark across all of our funds for our budgeted revenues and expenditures. We're on par for where we should be at this time. We are remaining vigilant in reviewing all of our expenditures. We're still focusing on making sure our expenditures are operation essential, given that we're still dealing with some of the impacts from COVID-19. But we are where we should be. And if you have any questions, please let me know or email me later. The second thing I want to do is we have Ms. Pat Pomeroy with the chamber, who's joining us via Zoom, that will be able to provide a report on the chamber. She listed under Bill Pomeroy.
Meet me. Okay, I'm using Bill's computer, sorry. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. I sent over a report today. I know that our schedule looks kind of like we're not doing a whole lot, but right now we are just really working on hoping that this virus goes away soon and we as a chamber can start networking and being together. Today I'm working on a, it's called a one can learn, but it's probably just going to be classes that we're going to start end of March for businesses so that they can, we have a speaker coming, and they are going to talk about businesses, all the different things that businesses should know about insurance, about their finances. I think one of the first ones is if you're, something happens to one of your partners, how do you handle this? And they're not asking for their business, I just want, actually just for people to know what to do. And so I feel like it's an opportunity for us to let our chamber members know we are working for them and we're trying to do our best to help them in any way possible. So I did talk with the mayor today, and we are actually have some hour, we're changing our hours for the rest of the month, and we will be open Monday through Thursday from nine to four. And we ask that people only come in if they have an appointment. And if they don't have an appointment, they can knock on the door or call, and we will have masks available for them to put on. So we're all trying to stay safe also.
Madden, we're having some trouble with your audio.
I'm sorry.
If you could just kind of email me your comments and I can share them.
Okay, I'll do that right now. Thank you.
All right, if I may, I have it printed out, I think while she was trying to address. Board, chamber, or chamber board has asked the staff to go to appointments only for the remainder of January, to be reassessed in February. So there's a sign on their door noting for visitors that if they're needing Welcome Center information, they can call their office number, and they will actually be let in, masks are required, or they can set up an appointment. Pat has also listed her cell number. So, you know, they're signed up for the vaccine, but right now they're saying it'll be the end of March, April before they get it. So they just want us all to know they're still available for our businesses in our community while also being safe. So if you need to get with them, just call and set up appointment, and she'll be glad to set that up for you. And on the scheduled events, I have that if anyone has it. It's like she said, it's all contingent on what happens, but as of right now, it's the events follow her, the golf tournament, their oyster roast, their annual banquet, the tree lighting, and special facade next December, as well as the Christmas parade. Big thing is her leads group, they're sponsoring on the first and third Wednesday. There will be a Zoom meeting on January the 27th to discuss potential topics and things for these lead meetings. So contact the chamber for the link or for any information on that. I believe that's what she was trying to say. Back to you, sorry, Mr. Madden.
That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, sir. Next items are our report from standing committees. There are six standing committees. Their reports are highlighted in the Malden Report. There should be copies of that, also can be sent online if you need it, see that. But if any chairperson needs a moment to highlight something in their particular committee, please make note about a raise of a hand, thumbs up, question, nodding head.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to put out there that I'm visiting, obviously via Zoom. I wanted to try out the new technology and see how we're working on both ends of this. So this will be my first experience from you guys in the chamber with the new system. So I was excited to see that. But we have nothing major coming out of finance and policy tonight, but I did want to follow up on Mr. Madden. A little bit as you guys start looking at the budget numbers, you'll start seeing, obviously, the property tax number go up periodically. Obviously, we've only collected for December, and January numbers are coming in slowly. So that'll be one number to keep an eye on as we move forward. And the next big one will obviously be business licensing. So being that we went through a crazy year last year, we hope that with a little more normalcy and a little better system from where we're at from last year, we'll hopefully see those numbers start to go up as well. But other than that, keeping in mind, we've got budget meetings coming up in, starting in March, and we'll start this whole process over. But thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, the records also reflect that our legal counsel, Mr. Dugan, has signed on remotely. He is with us tonight. Thank him for joining us. Next item on the agenda, what, a little bit different this month. We're trying out some things that other municipalities and districts have tried. Our first unfinished business, item seven ordinances on second and final reading. Each item we presented by our city clerk, Ms. Miller, and then recognize the chairperson for any action. So Ms. Miller.
First item we have is annexation at Standing Springs Road and Union Church Road. There are three ordinances associated with this annexation. The first one is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of property owned by Henry Pat Willamond Jr. Revocable Trust and located at 36 Union Church Road by 100% petition method and to establish the zoning classification of RTN residential.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Chairperson Kuzner, any action?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I would like to make a motion to approve on second reading this ordinance to provide for the annexation of property owned by Henry Pat Willamond Jr. Revocable Trust and located at 36 Union Church Road.
Okay, I have a motion, is there a second? Second from Mr. Black. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, like sign? Hearing none, the motion carries seven zero. Ms. Miller.
Second ordinance provides for the annexation of a portion of property owned by Union Baptist Church in Greenville and located at 50 Union Church Road by 100% petition method and to establish a zoning classification of RTN residential.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I would like to make a motion on second reading to approve an ordinance to provide for the annexation of a portion of property owned by Union Baptist Church at Greenville and located at 50 Union Church Road.
Motion is there a second? Second, Mr. Black. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed, like sign? Hearing none, the motion carries seven zero. Back to you, Ms. Miller.
Third ordinance provides for the annexation of property.
It wasn't yours, Cindy.
Oh, okay. The ordinance to provide for the annexation of property owned by Fort Shoals Holdings LLC and located at 2152 Standing Springs Road by 100% petition method and to establish a zoning classification for said property.
Ms. Kuzner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'd like a motion, make a motion to approve on second reading an ordinance to provide for the annexation of property owned by Fort Shoals Holdings LLC and located at 2152 Standing Springs Road.
Okay, I have a motion, is there a second? Any discussion? Favor say aye.
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 Opposed, like sign? Hearing none, the motion carries seven zero. Ms. Miller.
Second annexation we have tonight is an annexation at Perimeter Road and Fort Shoals Road. There are two ordinances associated with this annexation. The first one is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of property owned by Ashmore Bridge LLC and located Ashmore Bridge Road and Fort Shoals Road by 100% petition method and to establish a zoning classification of C2 commercial for said property.
Thank you, Ms. Miller, Ms. Kuzner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion on second reading to approve the ordinance to provide for the annexation of property owned by Ashmore Bridge Road LLC and located at Ashmore Bridge Road and Fort Shoals Road.
The motion is there a second? Second from Mr. Black. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those like sign? Hearing none, the motion carries seven zero. Ms. Miller.
Second ordinance is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of property owned by William C. Willamond and located at Perimeter Road and Fort Shoals Road by 100% petition method to establish a zoning classification of C2 commercial for said property.
Ms. Kuzner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I would like to make a motion on second reading to approve an ordinance to provide for the annexation of property owned by William C. Willamond and located at Perimeter Road and Fort Shoals Road.
The motion is there a second? Ms. King, second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, like sign? Hearing none, the motion carries. Ms. Miller.
Last ordinance tonight for final reading is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of property owned by the city of Malden, Plant Street and West Butler Road by 100% petition method and to establish a zoning classification of C2 commercial for said property.
Provide for the annexation of property owned by the city of Malden and located at Plant Street and West Butler Road.
Second.
Second.
Second by everyone in chamber. Ms. King, we'll give her the credit for it tonight. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed, like sign? Hearing none, motion carries seven zero. Next item is new business ordinances, first reading, Ms. Miller.
There are two ordinances for first reading tonight. The first one is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of property owned by Nolan Max Cox and located at 1140 East Butler Road by 100% petition method and to establish a zoning classification of C1 commercial for said property.
Ms. Kuzner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I would like to make a motion on first reading to approve an ordinance to provide for the annexation of property owned by Nolan Max Cox and located at 1140 East Butler Road.
Thank you, Ms. Kuzner. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Crayling. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, like sign? Hearing none, the motion carries seven zero. Ms. Miller.
Final ordinance for first reading tonight is an ordinance to approve an amendment to the infrastructure reimbursement agreement between the city of Malden.
Mr. Mattany.
Mayor, I move that we approve on first reading an ordinance to approve an amendment to the infrastructure reimbursement agreement between the city of Malden and Center Point Land LLC and other matters relating thereto.
I have a motion, Mr. Mattany, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second, I have a second. There any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of first reading say aye.
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 Those opposed, like sign? Hearing none, motion carries on first reading. Thank you. Coming from standing committee items, next item, see Ms. Miller.
We have three standing committee items tonight that require one vote. The first is a public works facility improvements. Council has requested to approve a construction firm to serve as the construction manager at risk to provide pre-construction and construction services for renovations to the Public Works Building located on McDougal Port. Staff recommends awarding the bid to Sealy.
Mr. Crayling.
I move, excuse me, I move that council approve the request to have a construction firm serve as the construction manager at risk at the Public Works Building located at McDougal Port.
By Sealy.
By Sealy.
Is there a second? I have a second for Ms. King. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed, like sign? Hearing none, the motion carries seven zero. Ms. Miller.
Second is a resolution to amend an easement agreement. Council has requested to consider a resolution to amend the path of the Swamp Rabbit Trail along an easement granted by New Horizons Electric Cooperative, Inc. It is recommended that the council approve the resolution amending the easement agreement.
Okay, Mr. Mattany.
Actually, Mayor, there was a typo, and this should go to Mr. Crayling.
Mr. Crayling.
Sorry. Thank you. I'd like to, excuse me, I'd like to make a motion to approve the change the pathway of the Swamp Rabbit Trail on the easement as requested by New Horizons Electric Cooperative.
I have a motion, Mr. Crayling, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. King. There any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed, like sign? Hearing none, the motion carries seven zero. Back to you, Ms. Miller.
Final standing committee item denied is gym field rentals and tournament rentals. It is recommended that the city's current rental fees be amended as follows. The Malden Sports Center Gymnasium be raised to $60 per hour for half court and 120 per hour for full court with a two-hour minimum for each. The $15 an hour staffing fee for tournaments will stay. Light fee for field rentals changed to $25 if needed and change the fee to $100 for line the fields one time only to $50. There will also be a new tournament fee for two-day rental of the Sunset Park Fields, and there's four of them, which is to be of $1,000. Fee will cover field markings at the start of the day and touch up midday. The rental fees for Ray Hopkins Senior Center and Fields remain unchanged. All fees will be included in the city's fee schedule that will be included in council's annual budgetary review process. It is also recommended that council approve the facility rental policy and procedures.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Mr. Black.
On behalf of the Regent Committee, I would approve that we adopt this fee structure.
There's a motion to adopt, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Crayling. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, like sign? Hearing none, the motion carries seven zero. Ms. Miller, you are complete. Thank you. We are now back to agenda item, public comment. These are for any items not appearing on the agenda tonight, and it's open for anything for the good of the city of Malden that you could bring to our attention for our citizen, our business owners. First one to sign up was Mr. Robert Adams. If you would come to the podium and state your name and address for us, please, sir.
My name is Robert Adams, and I live at 907 Fargo Street. And of course, I'm here about the DOT road proposal, in particular, the route they prefer, which routes Bethel Drive through the bottom of the Taylor property and out to East Butler beside the new Freedom Church. And this is something that's going to destroy my immediate neighborhood. Two of my late neighbors faced demolition of their house. My next-door neighbor faces seizure of enough land for their house is not going to be nearly what it is now. And on the corner, our family at 900 Fargo Road is proposed to go so close to their house that it's going to ruin their property. They're not going to touch my house, except they're going to take a little property off the front. The road, the road is going to go right behind my house. And I may sound like a nimby, but the noise on that road is horrible. We get so many ambulances and hot rodders coming down Bethel Road that it's bad. Now it's going to be a lot worse. We understand that they didn't want to take alternate Route One, and we understand part of it. We don't want to displace the people in the Malden mobile home park. We understand that is a low-income housing area. We don't want to displace them. But my personal opinion is there's a way to solve this problem that doesn't harm anyone. And that is just to leave the road alone, Bethel alone. It would save the cost of making another bridge and the route through the bottom and the wetlands, which I love down there. All they would have to do, the SCDOT doesn't want to do that, is add a light on Old Mill Road and sync them. The SCDOT says we don't, that's too confining. There's not enough space between the lights. But I could show you and give you examples of this sort of spacing throughout Greenville County. I can tell you one is right down here where 385 goes onto Stone Avenue. As soon as you get off, you immediately take a right to go up Stone Avenue towards Main Street, and it's less space between the stoplights. So I'm hoping you guys will back us in fighting the SCOD, SCDOT, go with a solution that harms nobody. We started a group and stand with us, Malden, and we're just trying to lobby for this. And if you think about it, the way they designed the route, Bethel Drive floods, and we have hard, hard rains. And on our site, you can see videos of flooding. The way the design is now, the people on Cameron Place, there's 57 pound homes, will not be able to get out of there unless they go through the CVS parking lot. Same way, if the people in Cameron Place need fire protection, EMS, they need to go to work or school, or if they just want to go shopping, they're going to have to go through the parking lot of CVS. Pretty tight parking lot. I don't see how they're going to maneuver, fire trip. It's, they would be better off building a bridge on Bethel Road right where it floods, raising the level of the, you know, and saving them money. Taylor property value wouldn't be affected. Pineapple property services would not be affected. Mary Sue Barbary, I think that's her name, her property wouldn't be affected. The little house right next to her, which is owned by a son something LLC, wouldn't be affected. You guys would help us fighting the SCDOT. We don't want Malden to be a cut through. What we want, at least the people in our group, is we want to see Malden develop in such a way that it's not a cut through for Woodruff Road. What we envision is not increasing traffic flow out here, but actually constricting. DOT says those two lights together constrict traffic. We don't mind, because we'd like to see people find another way to get to Woodruff Road. And it can be done. We see development. Imagine if you will, kind of like a town. Imagine if you will, kinda like a town that looks like Simpsonville. That's, the thing about Simpsonville is they have some two-story buildings. Imagine if you will, the one I thought used to be the LS Green home. You saw two-story brick buildings down through there. Out front, they had nice parking, maybe a little Vistro sidewalk like all, like Green. We wanna slow traffic now. We wanna make Malden a friendly little city where people wanna pull into our store instead of saying, I gotta go to the big box, I gotta go to the big box, I gotta go over there.
Mr. Adams, I'm sorry, I meant, I failed to tell you there's a five-minute limitation on that, but in deference to you, I'll give you thirty seconds if you wanna wrap it up.
Okay. Thank you for letting me speak. I appreciate it and I hope you guys will see the advantages of not, I mean, heck, let SCDOT, just a little bit of asphalt, let them dig down to the hardpan and make us a real good road. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Sorry about that. I should've, part of that order was to tell you that there was a five-minute limitation on there. Second, on Mr. Butcher, same thing, if you'd come to the podium, state your name and address, please. And there is a five-minute limitation.
Thank you, sir. My name is Jim Butcher. I'm resident at nine oh one Fargo Street. And my house is one of the three that will be bulldozed by the proposed SCDOT route that Mr. Adams is talking about. This is my first time in one of, in a meeting like this and in this kind of format, so I'm not sure exactly, uh, the way to go about this, but I was hoping to bring kind of officially to the council's attention and put into the record some alternatives that, that didn't seem to be very well received at the DOT meeting on the fourteenth. And just, just to get it into the record and see what kind of, what the council's opinion of that was. And that was simply ways in which the redirection of Bethel Drive could be avoided or altered in a way that would not destroy basically anyone's home, which I think is supposed to be their goal to begin with. First is that this project, the two intersections of Old Mill and Bethel, the redirection of that road doesn't actually have to be done in the first place for several reasons. The widening of Butler Road would also involve, I guess, they wanted to do that and change the road because of the traffic turning left from Butler onto Old Mill, or from Old Mill left onto Butler. And with the widening of the roads, I would like to see if anybody has an opinion as to whether or not just a simple dedicated turn lane with the orange cone markers so that nobody can cross in and out of that turn line would actually fix that problem. I have taken that route many, many times and I've never had to wait more than a few minutes, probably most times less than a typical light would have me wait. And I think that that's something to be considered. Simply the addition of that dedicated turn lane that is extended back past the GT Store, that would allow for people on Old Mill to avoid oncoming traffic and not have any conflicts there. As well as the fact that Mr. Adams mentioned that the roads, the two lights could be synced, but that the DOT said that that was not quite as, as close as they liked. It's true that there are others that are closer, but the house on the corner of Old Mill and Butler is apparently for sale. That could, that land could be obtained and those roads could actually be brought closer together so that they would be inside whatever, whatever distance the South Carolina Department of Transportation would like them to be, so that those two lights can be synced more efficiently without actually having to have them meet, which is the, the main problem that they're trying to avoid is that they can't meet them without, without going through too much property. And the, the last is simply wanted to find out, I'm, I've been trying to research this myself and I've not had much luck, but basically the question is how tight can a turn be? By, the, the route that they are proposing is, is a very broad and very wide turn that does not, that can, I apologize, I'm not a public speaker. There is many examples here in Malden, Simpsonville and Greenville, everywhere of roads coming up to intersections that have much tighter angle than the runs that they're proposing. And if they were able to take the turns a little bit tighter, they could go around my house and everyone else's home by starting the turn a little bit later, still come out exactly where they wanted to without disturbing anyone's home. This was apparently one of SCDOT's first proposals, but there was a stakeholders' meeting apparently in September that they brought the Taylors, the owner, the Taylor lady from Columbia was owner of that property, not the resident at the moment, brought them in when they asked their property not be divided. It's empty property, it's on a hill, it's not really, it's not really used for anything, but yet they do not want it to be divided. By input from that stakeholder, they decided to move it further to the right through three people's homes. And they did that without contacting what I would consider to be new stakeholders. And I, I am finished, sir. Ten, fifteen seconds. They decided to contact, to do that without contacting new stake, the new stakeholders, which is myself and the Quicks and across the street. So what is the opinion of the council? Does that invalidate, does that mean that the Department of Transportation did not meet the requirements to have stakeholders involved in the decision? Does that invalidate some kind, in some way, their plans? Is that something that I can, that I should bring up at a later time in a personal meeting? Or can I be a best here?
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Actually, there is no dialogue back and forth, it's just actually for the public to state their comments, and so we appreciate your comments.
I simply wanted to get those options on the record. Thank you, man.
Thank you, sir. Next person, Mr. Thornton. If you'd come forward to the podium, state your name and your address, please. Again, five minutes.
Nice to see everyone here, this is two thousand twenty-one, Clarence Thornton, at one fourteen Dartmouth Street, Greenville, South Carolina. While we talk about things going on in our nation and help but look at what has been happening, God is still saying the same thing he always has said, choose ye this day who you will serve. God is still telling us as a nation, choose ye as a nation who you will serve. America needs to get back to its roots. We ask and we pray to God about a pandemic. And God has really already given us an answer to it. He says, wear your mask, social distance, sanitize. You can go back to Scripture where God told Moses, tell the people that I would pass through and strike the Egyptians. And when you see the blood on the lintels on the two doorposts, the law would pass over the door and not allow the destroyer to come into your houses to destroy you. He told them to stay inside. We have a generation that says, I don't wanna do that. I believe it's my constitutional right. Can you imagine if the children of Israel had said, I'm not gonna put blood on top of the doorposts? Messiah, what would happen with that plague? Can you imagine if the children of Israel would say, hey, we're gonna go outside anyway and do what we want to do? What would happen with that plague and happen with the children of Israel? God has given us leaders to tell us the right things to do. But for whatever reason, we don't wanna wear a mask. Oh, no, that's inconvenient. We don't wanna stay in our homes, that's inconvenient. So we as a nation, we not only must be a hero of the word, we must be a doer of the word. And as a nation, we don't need to politicize God. You see that lies are detrimental to our nation. Society, the whole world fell because Satan told a lie. When our politicians, regardless of who they are, tell people things that are not true, then we can't help but have this dilemma in our country. The whole world fell because of Satan lies. That's why Jesus said, I am the way, the truth and the light. No man come up to the Father but by me. So we as a Christian nation, we must always tell the truth. We as Christians, gonna be true Christians, we must operate in the light. Jesus said, if you love me, keep my commandments. He also told us to love thy neighbor. Jesus gave us the great commission to go out to all the nations. How can we go out to all the nations if we hate one another? How can we go out and spread the gospel, the good news, if we have hate because of someone colored? Martin Luther King said, there's three evils in society, and that's racism, poverty and war. And all of them are intertwined. Jesus gave us the way. We must turn back to that way. We must learn to worship God in our words and not our deeds. Don't be a hero of the word, but do it. People ask, who are we as a party? Who are we as a nation? But the main question should be, who are we in Christ? Think about Ronald Reagan, I think, think about Tipper Neil. They were part of different parties, but they got along well because they were both Christians. Jesus said, peace be still. We must say, peace be still in our nation. But if we want peace to be still in our nation, then it's up to us, it's up to each and every one of us as Americans to bring peace. There's only one Savior, and that is Jesus. No one can save a nation, no one can save a country, no one can save you but Jesus. But there is only one God. The people chose, and God's still asking us today, choose ye this day. Is Jesus gonna be the head of our country? Love gonna be the head of our country? I'm gonna end with this. If love is the greatest of all, then hate got to be the worst of all. Will our hate to get in our hearts? Do we really know Jesus? And help with the people over there that's fighting for their land? Let's work and see what we can do to help them, because they've been in their home, they really deserve this. We must not sell everything out for money. Thank you so very, very much. May God bless each and every last one of you. Realize, let Jesus be the head of our nation, or let God be the head of our nation. May God bless each and every last one of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thornton. Is there anyone on Zoom that?
Heidi Williams?
Ms. Williams, you state your name and your address, please, and as public comment, you have up to five minutes. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I was, I'm new to this technology. My name is Heidi Williams. I'm at two thirty Cambria Court. I live in Cameron Place. I didn't have anything to say this time. I do apologize. I was trying to just listen in to see what you guys are saying about the Butler Road extension, but I, I have my reservations about the extension of moving Butler Road because again, that does directly affect us in this neighborhood. But I'll, I'm just listening in this time, so I apologize.
No problem. Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate you joining in. Anyone else? No one else. That would close out our public comment. Next item on the agenda is council request. Is there any council member with a request? Mr. Mattney?
Thank you, Mayor. Have, have three items tonight. And this, all really for the city administrator. Mr. Madden, the limb collection schedule on the city's website was current up until December thirty-first. I'm getting a lot of questions about limb pickup. If we could put an updated schedule on the website, that would be great. Second piece, there are a number of new signs from SCDOT that have appeared detailing weight limits of commercial and emergency vehicles over the bridge on Old Mill. And I've seen it in other parts of the county as well. I mean, this highlights obviously the horrendous condition of our, of our state's bridges. But what is this gonna mean for local traffic going over those bridges? Because our emergency vehicles, our fire trucks, our sanitation vehicles would routinely exceed these weight limits, but emergency vehicles can't afford to detour and add time to cause where seconds can literally mean the difference between life and death. So, Mr. Madden, if you could just kinda check into those signs, I've seen them over there near Great Wall and then again, before the bridge on Old Mill. And the third piece, and I, I would like to thank Ms. Williams, Mr. Butcher and Mr. Adams for, for speaking tonight, because I, I really think that the overwhelming majority of residents in our city think that the current East Butler Corridor plan, for lack of a better term, stinks. It doesn't follow the recommendations that came from the study that was done in two thousand sixteen. There was a tremendous amount of effort that, that went into that. And it, it created a, a plan that generated what we would see as the, the mixed-use path, still providing for, allowing for that increase in traffic that we know is coming. So I, I would just urge anyone who's been paying attention to the East Butler Road issue, whether you're affected by it or whether you've just been watching it, continue to make your voices heard, not just here at City Hall, but to DOT. We've certainly been meeting with members of, and then staff of our state and federal legislative delegations. Make sure that they know where, where you're coming from and what your thoughts and feelings are. So for everybody who's gotten involved to this point, thank you. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I will be quiet.
Thank you, Mr. Mattney. Any other council requests? My only comment also would be to the residents, thank you for speaking tonight, especially those on the East Butler Road corridor. I have been very vocal in leading the last couple of months on getting everyone up to speed on our two thousand sixteen two design document that was put out that said what the city vetted and what we still stand behind from what I'm hearing. I'm not hurting the opposition to that particular design. The period we're going through right now, the thirty-day period, that is a South Carolina DOT public involvement hearing. It is not sponsored by the city, it is not in, it is somewhat endorsed by the city. We provided the facilities for them to come in and of course, we put it on our website and be sure that you know how to get in touch with them. But all your comments, always feel free to any elected official here to speak up and voice it to us, along with our staff members that are involved. But do not fail, please do not fail to get your comments to Ms. Casey Lucas in Columbia at DOT. That's what's going to count, believe it or not. It is a state road. The city continues to voice their concerns and we will continue to. We will keep our various elected officials above us briefed on where we're standing on that process type thing. There's good things and there's bad things, in one man's opinion, mine, about that whole project, okay? So be sure you read it, blow those drawings up where you can actually see the yellow lines and the center turn line. It is not a widening project for five lanes. That went away. There is a turn lane, but there are other turn lanes being added to improve the flow of traffic, not the volume, the flow of traffic. So understand all that and then put your comments in document form and send them in to Casey Lucas, and that would be my only request. I guess I'll make it into a council request. Please feed any information, concerns you have to me. We do have various briefings that we are talking to our elected officials on the county, state and federal level. And at the appropriate time, we plan to enlist their support on alternatives. So I ask council to continue to do that. Anything else? Here none, what, we could stand- Here none, what, we could stand adjourned, is any objections? Here none, we are adjourned. Approximately seven fifty.